The Department of Labor will stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Lord God, who is the Father, who is the Son, and who is the God of all. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Please down there?
What's that?
Please down there?
Yeah, they're down there. Someone?
Want me to go in?
Yeah, I asked Karen to get down and tell them we can continue this meeting. Sussler, Reiger needs to be out of here and get to another meeting. This meeting been called to order, Pledge of Allegiance and a Moment of Silence. First item on there, an executive session, as I recall, we had done since last month. And at this time, recognition of visitors, Chuck Stoner, Chuck Wall, and Rich Reiger is here. Go ahead.
Rich Reiger is here.
Oh, yeah.
The reason I wanted to come in tonight, I know you're not making any decisions on coming over tonight, but we talked about doing tar and ship in the shoulders. And we have four or five homes, their front yards come out and meet the blacktop. We did hit one tar and ship in that front yard. And my question was, is there any possibility that we could tar and ship, but we don't have that, skip that, we can put that on paper, and then do the rest as tar and ship? So we can keep their front yards as well. And we don't have a problem with the seeped water, the way it is now with the swales, they work perfectly. And I'm afraid if we brought their two far on the shoulders, everyone could create water problems and have to redo the swale line in places. But the swales are done what they're supposed to do. And they're not washing or anything.
Well Chuck, last time when I asked you a marshal one here, two or three times, did you understand what you need? What you need to do is modify your plan to show what you want to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And until that gets back before the Planning Commission to see whether it goes through, that's what you'll have to do.
Yeah.
You'll have to modify to show what you want to do. Am I correct, Richard?
Yeah, I think the Planning Commission, we had a letter. I looked at the minutes from the last meeting, and there was a letter sent that says that. The difficulty with, is we need a plan. Once we have the plan, and it is acceptable, then you can do what you want if it's approved.
I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that right off the bat. But we have, I was waiting for a price on what it would cost to do various things. But it still are two possibilities. And it took a long time to get that to me. Otherwise, I would have probably had an amendment here tonight. But, and I met with the Planning Commission, really good meeting, on Monday night. But my plan is to have amendment for your next meeting.
Amendment plan?
Yeah.
Okay. And that should go through the Planning Commission?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I wrote you to the policeman. But we're gonna, we're gonna have that amendment ready for the next meeting. I wanted to run that by you. Because the neighbors keep the place really nice. The swales are doing what they're supposed to do, there's no washing or anything. And I want to keep them happy because they're good people.
Did you bring up what you wanted to do in advance to the Planning Commission the other night?
Yeah.
You mentioned the same thing, though.
Yeah. Wait a minute, Henry. I mentioned to them that some of the people didn't want tar and ship in their front yard. Remember that, Helen?
Yes.
But I didn't, I didn't get into, we'll have to have some sort of a sketch so you can, you people can see it on paper rather than just hearing it. You know, what would be cut out? And there's places where we need to tar and ship, and we do that. But at the same time, I want to keep the people happy.
You'll have to amend your plan, show what you want, Chuck. It may need to be more than just a sketch, too.
Yeah.
Not to have a plan at all.
Engineering.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if approved, re-record it.
Yeah, well, that's recorded. That'll be recorded after it comes to you, right?
Yes. Am I correct in that, Richard?
Yeah, sure. If it, if it comes soon, it's approved, that gets recorded.
Okay. Question, another question I had was a performance letter of credit. We have a letter of credit now for forty thousand something. And we just spent forty-five thousand on the top wearing service. And I wanted to see if we could get the performance letter of credit reduced accordingly. When the amendment is approved, we don't have to wait until the work is actually done? That was my understanding at first. But there's plenty there. With the forty-five thousand, the letter of credit now is forty-five thousand something. So, and I don't, I don't expect you guys to reduce it, forty-five thousand, because I spent that.
There'll be, there will be a reduction, but the plan's got to come in first. Max said that at the last meeting. By the way, the note said, it said, Mr. Stoner asked if he's entitled to a reduction of the performance letter of credit. Engineer Schradley said, if you make an amendment to the plan, you would be entitled to a reduction.
Okay.
So, that's, that's clear.
That's, that answers my question. Thank you, Rich.
You bet.
Okay, Chuck. Shoot, shoot, Bob. Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And if you could, I know Henry's been out, and you saw it, before we put the wearing surface on, you saw the binder and its shoulders and the swales, and you liked what you saw at that point. It's making a nice treat. It's gonna be nice.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thanks, Henry.
You bet. And before Sussler Reiger has to get out of here, let's, we only got a small crowd, let's take the visitors here, and we'll let Mr. Reiger do his report and go.
Bob? Anything? C.C.?
Yes, one question. What, if anything could be done, should be done, if we have residents living in properties with no utilities? We have several residents in that situation.
Okay, I only knew of one.
Yeah, we have more than one. One's in ownership, one's a rental.
Say, no utilities?
No utilities. No heat, no light, no sewer, no water.
Then an area where storage is there.
Why any claimations reported to the zoning officer, have somebody go out and verify it, but is get them out of there?
Because basically, it's not that the property would be condemned, it's unsafe living conditions.
And there's no permit to live there.
No permit.
Yeah.
Inhumane conditions.
So they're not squatters, you know? Okay.
Apparently they are.
Okay, Stanley?
Two things. One's from Lee Ray, he's going to be here tonight. This is for Brian Peters. He wanted to know, why did you vote no to the Duncan Fire Company donation?
Why did I vote no? At the, at that time there, I felt that I did not have enough information to, on their budget, their finances, and their future expenditures to be able to make a clear conscious vote on that.
Okay. And myself, I seen a copy of, I'll call it a lawsuit, I guess it's a civil complaint. There's a copy of.
I can't read that from here, what is it? Yes.
And the first question was, did all the supervisors see it?
Yes. I have, and you saw it.
Yes, I saw the original one before. Does that have a timestamp on it? I saw the one before a timestamp. Yes.
Brian?
I didn't hear what document you had.
Uh, it's, uh...
Yes.
Okay. And I'm, thing was, who does the background checks for the police officers?
Some are done by myself, some are done by these guys, everybody's interviewed.
Everybody, everybody's in on the interview?
I don't know who does the interviewing, but the people are interviewed.
Correct. The actual background checks themselves.
There's several parts to a background check, yeah. So, pretty much, you know, everybody's got their hands in the background check.
And before an officer was hired, do all the supervisors get to see the background checks?
I didn't hear what you just said, I'm sorry.
Before an officer was hired, do all the supervisors, before they vote on it, do they get to see all the background checks?
I don't know. Yeah, but, when they do, when we do the interviews, yeah.
Yeah, when we do the interviews, the background checks are here.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wondered how Alphathursian Pogus came through. I see it was listed here on the end, last page. Didn't read so well, I just wondered.
How are you what?
Well, how are you interviewed, and how does the background check come through?
Yeah, well...
Last page on that, that alleged complaint does not say that Mr. Zampoli was found guilty of anything or even charged. So if he was never charged, or never found guilty... That's what I'm asking. That's why I ask him.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Next.
Alinda Gels. Mr. Pickle?
Yeah, I like to touch on that EMS letter I brought up, it's a paper of mine. We know that the other supervisors hadn't seen it, and I believe Helen said it was a complaint to have sent to the police department. So I guess maybe the letter came in, in an envelope addressed to the police department, I don't know. But the letter was actually addressed to myself, and carbon copied to the supervisors and the police department. So, we now know that the letter was pulled, told not to put it in the cameras. And I'm just wondering why supervisors don't see all the documents that come in to the office?
Why they don't see all the documents that come into the office?
Well, when it's, when it's carbon copied, or addressed to board of supervisors, why they don't see them?
I do put the, the letters into the boxes.
But, you stated...
And I stated that was used as a complaint.
Supervisor Coleman, last one, admitted he would not put the letters in the packet.
Say that again, please?
No. Not in the packet, you stood over there, let's get it straight one more time. You stood over there with Helen and I, and I said, "It is not a township matter, I will not allow it to come on the board." It did not belong on the floor. It was a direct letter from EMS to you, and not a township matter.
But shouldn't the other supervisors...
And those copies went to everybody's bin. Because when that correspondence comes in, Helen puts them in a bin. It wasn't something to come out on the packet for the night of the meeting.
Okay, but if, if it's addressed to the supervisor, shouldn't it...
And it came in, it did. We got a copy from the EMS, sent by Christie to us. Helen copied it, showed it. Those go in, if you're not gonna put it out on the board, the supervisors get a copy of it. It went to the bin. Everybody's mailbox got one of them.
Okay.
It was not a township matter. Next, Helen.
Mr. Campbell?
The main reason I came here tonight was the, the fire company ordinance that I read in the, in the newspaper. And I guess I can speak on it now. I did talk to the individual that got the three hundred, or the eighty-three hundred dollar bill, if I'm correct on the figures. And she kinda caught my attention, so I was doing some research. And they mentioned about an emergency billing corporation is where, some sort of emergency billing is where the bill came from. And on the internet tonight, there was a, this is a quote from a John Zurich, if I'm pronouncing it right, he's director of government affairs for the Insurance Institute of Indiana. And it said, "Emergency billing, Emergency Service Billing Corporation has been grossly inflating charges on behalf of their clients. In the last eighteen months, the institute's member companies have reported seeing their average fire service charges go from three hundred to four hundred, to between two and five thousand dollars." And I was just wondering, I know everybody's scratching for money, but maybe they ought to give the residents, or the victims, or whatever you want to call them, a chance to pay the bill before they send it to a billing company, and have them inflate the price, then this company may not even be in the state of Pennsylvania. So, I'm not against the bill, or the ordinance, but like I said, if, if this is true, and you hear the reports from telemarketers, that the telemarketers get more money from the donations, whenever they're calling for donations for corporations, or individuals, or whatever, they make more money than what they provide the company that they're making the calls for.
Do you understand that this won't be used for a house fire in Penn Township or anything? I guess it's only used for, usually the travel-throughs out here, the local residents probably are not gonna feel anything from it, but there's those that come through, and some of them do. But they, they claim that they try not to do that, I've heard it both ways, and what they bill for, and what they don't do. But basically, that's for the accidents and stuff out here, on the highway out here.
Yeah, I, I understood that part of...
Not for equipment either.
But it was, like I said, if, say the bill's a thousand dollars, and they make it two thousand dollars because of their collection fee, or their billing fee, I should say, not a collection fee, wouldn't it be decent to give the person an opportunity to pay it at a reduced fee before it's turned into a billing?
I guess that would be between them and their insurance company, they earn that out.
I also talked to my insurance company, and they, they said that they have never been billed as such for anything like that.
If I, if I can add to that, I had received a bill for eight hundred and fifty-three dollars from this recovery company, and they are out of California. And when I called my insurance company, when I received the bill, they said that, that bill gets submitted through the, this was from an auto accident, gets submitted through the auto insurance. If they determine they're not going to pay it, they don't pay it, it doesn't come back to, to the individual. But it, like you say, is the charge inflated? And the way it was explained to me on the phone, which I won't go into a lot of detail, but they really put a lot into it that isn't necessary to make their charges. And that's why the insurance company shoots it down.
They, they don't pay.
So the question is, should there be something from Duncan Fire Department that they would try to recover from the individual first, give them an opportunity to pay the uninflated price for eight hundred dollar hose, or whatever, versus sending it to the collecting agency, or the third-party billing first? You know, that's something we can't dictate with them, because they're another organization. But I would like, if you would please, if you could give that to Helen to print out your hat, I'd like to get a copy of it before you leave tonight.
But the bill that I received was not for any damaged equipment, it was just strictly for them showing up.
Would it cover a field fire, or mountain fire, or anything like that, Henry?
I think it's just for accidents out there. It doesn't say, it states it there in the ordinance, just for accidents.
Something about incidental things, now, without a definition of incidental, it could be a whole world of...
Let me just take a look at it there, quick. This was the same thing, this is a direct copy, what Purdy cashed for, that we had, that we had approved before.
I only read it out of the documented records, so maybe I missed print of it, but... It's used as a result of accidents. Reasonable costs for equipment materials used at accidents, or incidents such as hazardous material incidents, motor vehicle accidents, safety and rescue incidents, without concern for the location. It's, no recovery of costs are permitted for structure fires, but strictly accidents.
Okay, alright. Okay, make it quick, Bob, we'll get right out of here.
C.C., your accident was in Penn Township, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, there's no ordinance in Penn Township for them to bill well, though.
That's true, at this point...
And that is what had the same as within Wheatfield Township, there's no ordinance to stop with the argumenting of Wheatfield Township.
Right.
Now, the argument that I get from the people who are putting this together, is that the fact that they're an incorporated business, they feel that they're just like sand or oil, or anybody else, the fact that their home bodies give them the right to do the billing, they can bill everywhere. Now, is that true, or can they do that, or what's the, do they really need an ordinance in Penn Township to bill in Penn Township, if they have it in Duncan and Barra?
Well, statutorily, you have to have that. I mean, the authority to do this came from the stat, from the legislature.
Yes.
And as a result, it, it, you have to have the ordinance, or you can't do it.
But you have to have the ordinance in the municipality that you're billing it, okay? Because these people that are sending the billing out feel that due to their home base allows them to do it, they can do it everywhere. Because the other thing that we had...
I understand what you mean with it, Bob, I'm sorry.
Well, they feel that they are a business that is providing a service in the Wheatfield in Penn Township, that they're allowed to use the home base rules out there.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So Penn Township, or Duncan Fire Company goes to Wheatfield, they feel because of this ordinance, they can bill the people in Wheatfield.
Well, they're using their Duncan ordinance to bill in Wheatfield right now. That would be eighty-three hundred dollars.
Well, and I think the problem that comes in, is that if you look at anything west of the Mississippi, if there are billing, third-party billing from there, they don't understand township boroughs and municipalities. They laugh at us when they, you know, because we go by the old English standards, you know, townships. So when they see Duncan and address, they think everything's Duncan and proper, when we're actually Penn Township, we're Wheatfield, we're this, we're that. So that's where clarification from Duncan has to be to their third-party billing, is that maybe they need to provide them a less, I don't know, that's something Duncan's gonna have to do. But, but we can, the ordinance that we're looking at, they can only bill for, for fires, not accidents.
No, accidents, not fires.
Not fires. Not fires. And that's the ordinance that we're gonna be looking at.
Whether to adopt it tonight or not?
Yes.
And if you saw on the record, if you believe it's in there, that Wheatfield's gonna take a look at what Penn Township has adopted, and maybe they'll do the same. So that was in the record.
It is.
Okay? Okay. Next.
Just an ongoing thank you. Thanksgiving's coming up, happy Thanksgiving. And should there be anything that you need from us, please let us know as we near the end of the year. I hope, Henry, you're feeling better, and certainly would you like to meet with us, we'd be happy to do so. You've had a lot in your plate with the season change and such, too. So, as always, thank you to residents and supervisors for your ongoing support.
Apologies for not getting with you. I sit down, Greg, and put something here together regarding to this. I think if you take a look at this, I'll give this to you, it's in regards to those very issues that we want to talk about, that you take a look, give you a chance to put together, and we can sit down and talk about it, maybe more reasonable, we'll be arguing all night. Okay?
Evina Allen?
Hi. I am here on behalf of my grandmother, Eunice Cotton. She resides at 150 Barnett Drive. And we hear about the road. I know that she had spoken with, you're Henry Holman?
Yeah.
She had spoken with you last year before winter about the road. If you know where Buddy Boy Winery is?
Yeah.
Heading up there. She is the last house at the top, and past the blacktop, where there's one house past the Buddy Boy Winery, and then it hits gravel. I believe that is, I have a copy of Friendly Fresh, trying to get the road repaired. She, I guess, talked to you last year, you said it's kinda on his end. He is outright refusing. She is in a situation now where last year, because of the road situation, she was stranded up for three weeks. Nobody could get to her, she couldn't get out. She is seventy-two years old, going on seventy-three, with extreme health issues. You know, he went back and forth with her, he's threatened her, he's screaming, he's calling you explicit language, saying you're a liar about, he said he wasn't even allowed on the road, he said that he could be up there, but just kind of building, he said you're a liar. So he said, she's that kind of thing going on. Right now, we're just concerned about fixing the road. How do we get it fixed? How do we make it safe? There's damages to vehicles, people can't get in and out. She, if, if she gets stranded up there again this year, and something happens, EMS can't get up to her, fire department can't get to her, nobody can. We had to park at the bottom by Buddy Boy last year, and walk the entire way up that hill, just to get to her, to bring her food.
It's a private road, Rich, going through, you're familiar with it, through Mr. Frisch's property up to these houses. At one time, those houses were not served by that road, are you aware?
No, and he cut off the road that was there.
You are correct. And he cut the road off, that was to those houses years ago, cut it up over the mountain, says you can use it. Now, people started using that road, and he refused to repair it, it's not a township road. And, and I'm not sure that there's anything we can do about it. We did take necessary action to, to get the township compensated for the tons and tons of stuff that works down on the road.
It's getting worse.
Then it's getting worse, and it worsens down there. At least he cleans it up now, instead of us. Before, he'd usually leave it plowed three foot deep, or with the injunction, I guess we have a guess, that we have the right to charge him for. Now, at least he cleans it up now. But before, I saw stuff back there, three, four foot deep, it worsened down there, that the residents clean it out, and we have to run back there with the backup. I went back in the middle of the night with my own, I owned a couple times and cleaned it out. So, while Rich is here, it's a question, there's not much...
I have pictures, if need be, of how deep these go.
I understand.
Is it, is, do we acknowledge it's a private road?
Okay, yes, I do acknowledge that. My question is, where do we go with it? It is such a hazard.
It would be between you and, and him.
You guys can't enforce him to do anything.
We have, we have no jurisdiction over him.
So, would he be liable, then, if something were to happen to him?
Well, that's something, you folks to, to deal with him on that regard.
See, that leads us back where we started, in nowhere, because Friendly is absolutely just, he has threatened her to say that he's gonna cut off the road, and she can't even use it. Then she would have to hike it up there.
Well, there is, you, you wanna talk to someone about what her rights are, because there are certain rights that one has, to have easements to your property, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd encourage you to speak to someone about that.
Okay, and where would we start on that?
An attorney that would know property rights.
Okay.
But unfortunately, we don't have jurisdiction over it. Otherwise, we'd be called upon to... Otherwise, we'd be called upon to fix private roads all over the place, and that's... We just can't do that.
I understand that. I was just wondering if you guys can enforce him to do anything because it's not just her property, there's another property out there as well.
We've done the best we could to keep the road open below that and to take care of that, but we can't go beyond the end of that township road there.
So basically, where it turns to gravel?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Rich, since she has access to there, I mean, she would be able to repair the road if she wished too, right? Correct? I mean, because it's...
The repairs to that, I mean, there's no touch in that. It's Friendly's... He's very adamant about if he touches anything of his, it's all worth it.
That's why I'm suggesting you contact an attorney because there are certain rights that you have.
It's extremely dangerous. It used to be a two-lane road, and now it is down to one car passing. You can see the blacktop is two-lane, and it's now this big and, you know, goes up to your knees of the ditch.
I wish we could help you.
Thank you. She doesn't know what to do. She's upset.
I understand that. She had talked to me about it, and I explained to her where we were at.
It's gotten so much worse. So much worse.
And he tried to tell her, I don't remember if she talked to me, that the township keeps him from fixing that up. No, that's not so.
Oh, yeah, no. His words were that if he touches it, you guys are going to throw him in jail.
That's what he said?
That's what he says.
And that's why when she called him back and told him what you said, that's when he was screaming, "You're a liar."
That is not true.
And dealing with Friendly for how many years now with this, you know, he's not the best of characters.
Okay. Next, Helen.
Mr. Binner?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Can I get you, sir? You got anything to say? And you, sir?
Yes, we are actually renting out the rec room from week-to-week basis for Breakthrough Kids. I believe that you were the people that... So anyway, the question that we have right now, we have to take care of it from week-to-week basis. With it being established, we've been there a month, and it is something we are looking for. I mean, we have to know, we have the space to keep the program running efficiently. So the question would be, would we be able to rent that space out for an extended period of time? And if so...
That's on the agenda later on.
It's on the agenda tonight. We've got you on here to talk about that.
Okay.
Okay?
Awesome, thank you.
And then Mr. Warner, and that's it.
Okay. Anybody else have anything that may pertain to, needs Solicitor Wiger's advice? If not, I'm done distressing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Happy Thanksgiving, though. Happy Thanksgiving.
Byron, you're up.
I'm not.
Okay.
Invoices and expenditures.
This month, other than the normal operating expenses, we paid for the line painting. We processed the payment to the Duncanan EMS, which was approved last month. And we paid Sylvester's for the fees for the fall cleanup.
Okay. And what was that, Bob, our number this year again?
Four thousand nine hundred fifty. Well, no, that's minus the fifteen hundred. For thirty-four hundred.
Thirty-four hundred, wasn't bad.
Top a hundred cheaper than last year.
Yes. Okay. Hearing the comments on the invoice and expenditures, what are the wishes of the board for approval? I make a motion that we approve the invoice to the expenditures to be paid. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give the consent of saying aye. As have it, so order. Treasurer's report.
Wait a minute. I vote yea with the exception of the bill for two associates to play a stand for them because...
Okay, that is check number what? Check number two seven seven nine zero.
Okay.
So we need a motion for... Well, you're just abstaining on the motion.
Abstaining from that, though. Motion was made with a second, and the ayes have it, okay? Treasurer's report for you. Let me add, I think that's not important.
We had two deposits from capital tax, one for the earned income tax and a second for the local services tax.
Okay. And what is the wish of the board in regards to approving the treasurer's report?
I move the treasurer's report be approved, set up to the audit.
Okay, I'll second. All those in favor, give the consent of saying aye. As have it, so order. Okay, minutes, October...
Hold on. We also have a parking rec CD that matures December 18th, which is the day after our next meeting, but I wanted to get your approval tonight. They would like to go with the municipal easy access CD at point six-five percent.
That's eleven thousand...
Fifteen dollars.
Okay. I make the motion that we go to concur with the recommendation of the parking rec board for eleven-month CD, goes with municipal easy CD at point six-five percent with Mifflin Town.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent of saying aye.
Aye.
As have it, so order. Minutes, October 29th, 2014, for the conditional use, and October 29th, 2014, meeting events. What is the wish of the board for approval of both of those minutes? Subject to any changes?
I make the motion that we accept the minutes as ours.
Okay, motion been made.
I second the motion.
Second. All those in favor, give their consent of saying aye. As have it, so order. Highway report. When we got our line painting complete, we used our last eight-hundred-gallon oil tank out here before the weather got to the point that we couldn't use it, and we got that done on the last day of nice weather. And with it, we made some much-des repairs. We fixed up the bottom of Fox's Road off the butcher shop there, which is up. We've done some repairs of the sawmill there at Ford's mailbox and whatnot. There was a huge hole developing there. We got the... That was our final act when we got down to the last bit of our oil. We worked on Schoolhouse Road, patching a lot of them. We widened portions of the road on the bend going up to Mr. Gerner's place there, going in Holman Drive, made that wider, fixed those swales up so it wasn't worsening out. We guttered down through there a couple feet deep. And we straightened that road out there. I took that bend out that I was trying to, all these years, to get rid, so we had placed plow snow getting around there and give us more room getting around there with the snowplows. This time, while that being done, we got... All of our trucks have been greased, oil filters changed, and put in the log books. They are all ready for the winter. All plows are in working order. We had one that plow didn't want to turn. It was beyond our fixing and hydraulics. We took it up to Hoover for sixty-five or seventy dollars.
Something like that.
They fixed it for us. It is back and working. We drained the water in the rec board, put in the freezing traps, drained the toilets out, drained the water lines coming back into the building, and got everything out there, the water here, and everything drained so it don't freeze up. Okay, so we took care of that on a rainy day. We changed oil filters in your lawn mowers, changed oil in them, greased all the mowers, checked the belts, put the mowers back in the shed out there, took the batteries out and put them down and warm them in the garage. We'll purify it, we'll put two amp on, keep them charged up. So that's been taken care of down there for another year. We started up our emergency generator out there, which we do once a month, and so that we have record of it, that we start it up and log it in to keep it in operation and keep fresh gas in it. All the small engine oil we have changed at the end of the summer for our generator, our floor saw, the Thorboggy motor, our pressure washer that we use out there, and all logged in in the maintenance log box. We chipped huge piles of brush. We found something that Chipper didn't take, and that was that huge pile of cornstalk some farmer dropped off for us. Chipper just don't like them. That was underneath the pile of brush. Nevertheless, we got to work around it. We worked on... We're working on Highland down here. Hopefully, we're going to get that poured here on Friday. Getting the rebar in down there, pouring the base down there, and going to put a retaining wall up there where that water comes down, where we're stacked down over on the 274. Hope to have that base poured. Little nasty cold weather out there, but we're out there working. Called over here to find out about the new pickup truck. Supposed to be arriving in Hopman by December the first, and should be in our possession before Christmas, with the new plow and everything on it. And it's nice to know that we're getting a truck out here, and it's also nice to know that we have the funds in it there to pay for it at one loan and pay for that truck that it's... We don't need to carry that over. The men are using their vacation time up. They've worked all summer and haven't used it. Now, here they are at the end of the year, hunting season and the holidays. If the weather and the snow leaves us alone, they're going to be using up their vacation. They have planned off, just so everybody knows, for next week, starting Monday, right into deer season. We are being called 24 hours for emergencies, for snow. They will give those days up and take other days out of it, but they have days to use up between now and Christmas, and they'll be working on that. So don't hesitate for any calls from anybody that they come in. There'll be someone to come out and take a look at them, okay? And I'll be in every morning for a while, okay? And those days off. So that's all I have on the highway report out there. So far, we've escaped the ice, and I'm glad I don't live in Buffalo, New York. Penn Township Planning Commission.
Henry, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Last month, you had said we're getting ash from Brunner Island.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sis, I don't have that on there. Go ahead.
No, you gave it last month. Three dollars a ton from Brunner Island. Is that delivered, or do we have to go get it?
We have to go get it, or you would have to hire someone to go get it, you know what I'm saying? To get down to bring it up in a big truck. We looked at what it costs to go get it by the tri-axle load, you know what I'm saying? And then the... We're not... Haven't eliminated that, you know, what we're taking a look at there. If you get a bad snowstorm, and we get a lot of snow, and the people are busy with their tri-axles removing snow, which so many of them work through the winter, it's hard to get trucks. So at the present time, we went down, I met with the people down in Brunner's Allen. Our trucks are being weighed in empty. They give us the code number for it, and you're not allowed to take them out there overweight, but you won't overweight them with that ash down there. Very good product. It looks actually a little bit better, I think, standing than what we got from out here. It's going to cost us three dollars a ton, it'd be about fifteen bucks a truckload is what it's going to cost us. And that is way cheaper than getting our ant or skid that we were looking up here. It's not a long trip down there. Instead of making a round trip about every forty-five minutes or every hour to Camp Hill, it's going to take about an hour and fifteen. So you'll go in there, punch a code in for that truck, you come back out, you punch that code in, wait, you're free to go. And they bill you according to what's weight is on that truck. But they really have a very nice facility there. They'll load you. They are open, another thing I like, they are open from five in the morning to two. So we can get an early start in the morning to go get skid or something after a night storm or... But they do close at two o'clock in the afternoon.
Good. Thank you.
So that's what we're planning on doing at the present time, Sis.
If needed, right?
If needed. Penn Township Planning Commission, Sunshine Hill Water System update.
Yes, they are asking for a time extension until January 29th. They're going for a variance, which you'll see later. Yes or no?
Okay. I make a motion we grant them the time extension, huh? I second the motion. Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their help. Saying aye.
Aye.
As have it, so order.
Okay, the next thing I have is for the Curlin property down there across from the Devotees. They're hooking up to the sewer system, and we have a mailer that needs to be sent in.
Okay.
Just need permission to sign it and send it.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we sign the mailer, send it to the DEP. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent of saying aye.
Aye.
As have it, so order.
And that's all I have on the planning commission.
Okay. Zoning report, Sunshine Hill Water System zoning variance.
Yeah, they're asking for a variance to not use vegetation around the property because the property is non-conforming, is short. On the width, it's short. You see what the planning commission recommended, that a minimum screening other than vegetation is provided. They're thinking of fence chain link with slats or something. What you guys need to decide is whether you wish to be a party to this or not.
My behalf of the township, Helen, I have no feel for neither myself being there, if any of the other supervisors feel so, they're welcome to attend that meeting. What do wish the board is whether they're part of it or not, part of that hearing.
I'm just all aware that the timing to be up to any little supervisor.
Okay. Motion made with a second to that. All those in favor?
No, I second.
No, I second. Most in favor, second. All those in favor, give their consent of saying aye. As have it, so order.
Then you have Lenny's report there, issuing permits and things. And that's it for the zoning.
Penn Township Parking Rec Board report.
SEO.
You have my report, and the only thing I have is December fifth, I'm having a holiday senior lunch, so if anybody knows anybody that wants to come up as far as seniors. And thank you for winterizing all of our equipment.
Okay.
Want to go back to SEO report now?
Yes, I will. I'm sorry. Shorty, fourth bill officer report right there.
Yeah.
Three items on it.
Mm-hmm.
Any comments? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Penn Township Municipal Authority.
I don't have anything. Unless the other two do.
Nothing from the... Everything brought?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Nothing from the municipal authorities. Secretaries report.
Okay. First thing is the Fire Company ordinance. If you... It's been advertised, and what's your wish?
Okay.
I agree with that table from the decision tonight. I have a question about one item that I'm...
Okay.
Is it some urgency to approve it tonight?
No.
No?
We'll have to re-advertise it, but not...
We have to re-advertise it. Something we can discuss this evening here?
Sure. And under where as, a second where as, Penn Township Board Supervisors authorized Duncan and Star Company to charge and collect these reasonable costs directly or through the utilization of third-party billing service. I would like to see some language that requires them to, rather than it being or, being steps, have them make the effort to collect the reasonable cost directly prior to going to the third-party billing service, which automatically means more cost.
Mm-hmm. That would be on our end.
That's correct.
We would have to bill the insurance company directly.
I understand that, sir. But what I'm asking for is that the language states that the fire company make the effort to do the recovery first, when the cost would be less to the person or persons being built.
And if I may, we tried that in years past, and it comes back zero. We're... We'll be wasting our time. What we do right now, we have a third-party billing company, Fire Recovery USA. We submit the information from the call to them. They send it to the building insurance company. The resident never sees a bill. These bills do not go to any resident in the township or wherever we serve. They go to their insurance company, and that their insurance company handles it through Fire Recovery. And that's as far as they go.
Okay. Well, that's not what I understood from the discussion earlier in the meeting before you rehearsed it.
Yeah. If there was any discussion about that bill in Weefield Township, that was a...
No discussion on that, but it was...
Homeowner's issue that was totally separate from... What was the inquiry about, if I may add?
We had a resident here tonight that said that they did receive a copy of that bill from that fire insurance collecting agency.
Resident from here, from the call here?
From an accident. No, we're referencing to... Oh, yes. Yes.
A call that was in one of our areas?
Penn Township, yes.
And they are a resident of Penn Township?
Yes.
Okay. Could I have that information, and when I can get it after the meeting? Because we can investigate that.
But in question to the resident in Weefield, they received the bill directly from this third-party billing.
And that was a totally separate issue than what you're dealing with here because it was a homeowner's insurance policy claim. It was not a vehicle insurance claim. And on a homeowner's, at least Erie, whose insurance that they had, Erie would only take a claim from their insured for a homeowner's issue. The bill came from Fire Recovery, not from the homeowner. So, they rejected it. In which Fire Recovery, when they get a rejection like that, it's sent to the...
So, Erie just wants to make sure that the homeowner is aware...
Submits...
That they're aware of his charge, okay.
Once the homeowner does that, it relieves them of all responsibility for that bill also. So, if the insurance company denies it, that's the end of it.
But I think the question at hand here is referencing to collecting for accidents, that it's been documented, not... I can't say proven, but these third-party collections or billing agencies inflict their collections or their fees, which is passed on to... But can we try to make the attempt to collect it first without having all that extra expense? You know, where they submitted to whoever, their insurance company, whomever.
The issue is that...
Because it's real easy. I just went through the same... I just went through it. All I did was I got a power of returning sent by my insurance company. I went to the bank, got it notarized, and sent it back to them, and I haven't received anything. You know, meaning that my insurance company from the auto is my ambulance bill, whatever bill might have been built, is being paid by the insurance company because I signed off on one...
In your accident, you shouldn't have gotten it... Was your accident in Penn Township?
Yes.
You shouldn't have gotten any bill from Fire...
No, I didn't get anything from the Fire Department. I'm just...
And here's the way it's supposed to work. When we have these... When we fill out these... The information that goes to the billing company, there is a box on there, resident, yes or no. If they're a resident of that municipality, we mark yes, and they should not get anything. That's the way that's supposed to work, so...
But that goes right to the insurance... To the auto insurance company?
As far as I'm aware, it's either one thing that they don't get a bill... That there's no bill sent at all because the gist of the ordinance and for the recovery cost is for people traveling through your municipality. It's not for the residents who pay taxes directly or indirectly to the municipality, which basically pay for the service provided. It's to recover cost from people that don't pay for that service. So, whoever got the bill, that's why I set up like that information because that should not have happened. Unless it was like an individual trucking company or something like that, is the only thing I could think of. But we tried doing the billing before, and it was not good. The rate of return was next to zero. Because we don't... Now, we weren't in play with ordinances and resolutions like we are now either. But it's still a fine line from getting a bill, Allstate or State Farm or GEICO or whoever, getting a bill from the Duncan Fire Company as it is from Fire Recovery USA or any of the other third-party billings. We've been successful with it somewhat, so...
Well, and I think what our concern is, from what we've heard from an article, that... And I believe it's the same third-party billing company that's in question, that they overinflate.
I don't know the rate. Like I said, when we send it out... And that's... There may be something from... I have to go back to the Fire Institute, but there was something published about billing amounts. And there is a standard through the insurance companies. So, even though Fire Recovery might submit a bill for X amount of dollars, they more than likely won't get that. The insurance companies have a rate that's set. And you can investigate that. I don't know the rates. I don't know... But there is only certain amounts we're gonna pay regardless. And that's when we fill those forms out, you have a checklist on what all functions you perform at that call. Whether you direct traffic, sweep, you know, sweep the roadway off, cut people out of a car, whatever. And all those functions are listed on that third-party billing form, and then they submit the bill directly to the insurance company. So, like I said, a resident in that municipality should never get a bill for that service. So, if that was done, that was done in error.
Right. Okay. I'd like to move on to this, keep the meeting going. If there's more questions by the Board of Supervisors, and we've had this before, it's for long enough now to have it settled, I'm willing to table one more month. But then...
If I made the motion to table, I would draw the motion.
Okay. If we wish to table, and there's further language in it, Mr. Peters wants to see something different, then I suggest three of us sit down together, or you bring your ideas back or throw them out here now, and move on with the meeting or the table. You can sit here all night, and we'll get back this protocol, and we get nowhere.
And this is the exact same ordinance that was in place with the previous fire company...
Yes.
Of Penn Township. The wording is exactly the same, with the exception that Penn... Perdix Fire Company was removed, and Duncan Fire Company has been taking its place.
I'm moving the adoption of the ordinance.
I second. Okay.
Question. With the exact language as it is now?
Here's your chance to change it.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay. Well, there is one change.
Okay.
The last whereas, this order shall be known as... The court should be at least be around Penn Township, not just around Duncan Fire Company reversal.
Okay. I can do that. But you want to change this wording? Want to ask?
No.
Okay.
Okay. And a motion to move the adoption of the ordinance? Do I hear a second?
I second.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. I just have it so ordered.
Okay. My next thing is a draft ordinance is enclosed here. We had a cable license fee. Our ordinance, according to Rich, says we can still have a cable license fee. It used to be 300 a year. My questions are, do we want to have a license fee for 2014 for the cable company? And the amount of the fee? And it has to be adopted by resolution, either now or at the reorganizational meeting? And I gave you a draft of the fee license we had before, and if there was any changes you wanted to that. So, those are my three questions on that.
And they should be done by the end of the year to be incorporated into our new license fee so that you have the purpose of getting that revenue beginning in next year. That was the purpose I asked for, if we put it each supervisor's bend, to take a look at this, if they have any recommendations for numbers in regards to this. If the board can't, or the board in general does not submit those numbers, then I will have the numbers myself to propose to make sure that they're not out of line and have them reviewed to present the next month.
Yeah.
The letter put in there was to incorporate that everybody had an opportunity, take a look at this, offer to comment what these fees ought to be.
Time to do it.
Now, I have a question here. On next year's budget, it shows here that... For revenue, $30,000.
That is on top of this.
Yep, that's on top of it.
Yes. That is for the person we have and all that.
Franchise, okay.
It was all those items that was in there that we had to establish fees for.
Correct. So, now we're looking at the yearly fee...
A yearly fee.
That we've been missing out on because we've never...
No, we've only...
We've never increased it, or it's never been going with... It's never changed with the times.
Correct. We have had... At least as long as I've been here, it's been $300, and that's what's all we got. Nothing else. But when I... We adopted the franchise agreement, I asked Rich if our ordinance for the cable... The cable license fee was still valid. He said yes. Therefore, we have to have a fee to issue the license.
Nothing conflicting with that with our...
Correct.
With our plans.
Correct. So, we have not... So, we've not attempted to collect that fee this year, or they've not attempted to pay?
No. Once we started into this, we did not collect a fee.
Okay. They put everything on hold, okay. Do we know what average for the surrounding area is on that fee? Do we know what other townships are?
Other townships who does not have, like Ride, they don't have the franchise agreement that I know of, also did 300, I believe. I don't know what Weefield did or the others, if I can find that out.
Once again, get the other fee established so that we got the revenues out here at the Tower of Robbs. Call the Coen Group because they have no idea what's fair or what's absorbent that it gets challenged. It has to be fair. You want to get as much revenue out. They suggested a number. We put the number on, it was adopted by this board to put in there. It's this board's decision to come up with these fees for the end of the year. And it's been out here for... From the day that we adopted this resolution, that they were to be done. And that's why I had Helen bump Brian and you letters in there, take a look at these fees. There has to be discussion on it. If there's no discussion, then I need to come up with some numbers, probably on my own, call the Coen Group to see whether we're in line, get some ideas from other municipalities. I don't want to be overboard, but I'd like to be not too low. I'd like to be in line.
I think we should be informed of what other municipalities are turning.
Okay.
I mean, we've fought all these years of being the underdog, all this to begin with. And they're not looking to stick them. But we have to look at what's fair, what's fair.
Yeah. And those other fees are still to be established too.
Yes, yes.
There's quite a few of them.
Yeah, those are the ones that we pass to them.
Yep, pass to them on that.
If you need more copies, I'll give it to you.
I make a motion that we table this for further review. Be brought before the board for a decision in a month or so.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. I just have it so ordered.
Okay. My next thing is the budget adoption. Because the state requires that the proposed budget be available for 20 days before adoption. We cannot do it tonight. We cannot adopt it tonight. We have a hearing on the 9th and with a meeting afterwards. That's the date I advertised it for. Because today was day 18. That was the best I could do, the closest to this.
Okay. So, adoption of the budget take place at?
On the 9th, yes. My next thing is...
Can I just insert something there? Referencing to adopting the budget on the 9th, I'm glad it's been pushed back. Because what I'd like to see happen is that was brought up at the very end of the meeting last month, and that from Weefield, referencing to a generator and looking to the township being partnered with them, and EMS and the purchase of the generator. With Chief Pickles being our emergency management...
Management coordinator.
MEO, or MLE, or EMO?
One of the...
HMO.
Yeah, HMO. What I'd like to do is see us reach out to Weefield. And because EMS is our second, secondary emergency site for evacuations and evacuation site. Are going to be presently first. They'll be in second, depending on the stay of time. I checked with Mr. Bell's office up in the county, and EMS is really our primary. After being extended here two days, everything would be moved out there. So, knowing that our residents and Duncan's residents could very well be at the EMS using their facilities, and with it being not inadequate, but not properly equipped, I would like to see, reach out to the municipalities around us and seeing if there's some type of an agreement that we can come with information with on the expense. I think we have two weeks we can work with that. Three weeks, really, that we can work with that, and seeing what we can gather for the next meeting to have that discussion and part of our budget. That, you know, even if we just say, you know, we agree that all parties are gonna participate. Who's gonna participate? Therefore, if we have four municipalities or three municipalities joining in on this endeavor, that's a shared expense. It's not $30,000. It could be $10,000, it could be $8,000, you know, pending upon grants that we've received at this point here. So, I'd like to see our Chief Pickles, since you're designated as our emergency person, reach out to those other personnel in those townships and see what we can do to get an understanding on that generator and how we can participate to make sure that our citizens are taken care of, one at the EMS.
Does that Mr. Bell's opinion? That's the second one out there?
From what I understand, he told me, no, it wasn't.
I just thought...
And it couldn't be at this point, so...
So, we have no second.
Well, right now, it looks like the fire company out on 274, they have a generator... They have their own generator, and it's already paid for, and it's up and running. So, that would be a... That would be a... If they be... Mostly, they don't last very long. It's usually people who end up getting... Taken to their family members and stuff like that, but...
I didn't know of any procedure that it was here for two days, then it gets moved. That I didn't know. I've never heard of that.
Helen, wasn't that your understanding? That it was after a certain amount of days, two days or three days?
It was when the emergency management coordinator told me they were moving out there.
I think it's something...
Last time... Yeah. Paul Solis did it one time. Paul Solis did it, and it was after two days, I believe it was, at that point. But it's not written down that I know of.
There's... The plan, I think, originated in maybe 10 or 12 years ago. And needs updating.
So, it's something that needs to be updated.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Next item, Helen?
Okay. The UCC Board of Appeals has a hearing coming up with a resident. Basically, it's whether you gentlemen wish to be party to it or not. It'll be on the 4th at 7:00 PM here.
I would like to attend that one, Helen.
Okay.
Okay. What time is it again?
You have the information in your packets. The next thing I have is the PSS Health and Pension Ordinance. I believe this was in September. We passed a agreement that we would agree to the trust agreements update of their regulations for the... Where is it here? For the Intergovernmental Cooperation Act and amended trust agreements. They are now asking us, as they told us then, to adopt the ordinances for the health and pension trusts. The health is disability and a life policy that the township participates in. And then the pensions, both the police and the non-uniform. What I would need is authorization to advertise this. We do not have to have this done until the end of January. So, if you want to look it over first and then authorize it for January or December?
I make a motion that we plan on preparing to make the adoption. Give us time, take a look at it for our January state of meeting.
Okay. No problem.
Second motion. Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Second motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent for saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Okay, and the next one is the trust agreements for a PSS Unemployment Compensation Group. Basically, the same thing, we have, they, I gave you the, what is this thing called? Amended and reinstated declaration and agreement of trust for PSS unemployment, that we don't have to do anything for. They're asking us to adopt an ordinance to agree to what's in there, same thing, end of January we have until.
Make a motion that we do that adoption at the same meeting. I hear a second. Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent for saying aye.
Okay, that's all I have under my report.
Engineer's report?
No report.
No report. Police report?
I have the copy of the activity report, it is still going well, we have completed our buckle up grant by the, at the end of October, and we're in the middle of our aggressive driving grant right now. And about it. Like to remind the citizens that, you know, with the cold weather, if you're not going to be using your grill, make sure you pull your, you know, tank off and, and put it in a safe and secure place, if you're not going to use the grill and keep the grill outside still, because last year we had several gas bottles removed for, for heating purposes, so.
On that note, please do not store them in your attached garages, basements, et cetera.
Living rooms?
No. They are.
Keep them warm.
The reason, just a history lesson, quick one for everybody, the reason the cylinders are kept in the outside of stores is because three firemen lost their life, lives in New York City in a hardware store fire on Father's Day, I forget what year it was before nine eleven, like two thousand, nineteen ninety-nine, because of propane cylinders exploding. That's why they're mandated to be outside. Please don't store them in your basements, attached garages, living rooms, dining rooms, attics, et cetera.
Okay, and what we have for the police report, solicitor report's over with and go on, permit report before you?
You have it before you.
Yeah.
And that's in that of the ordinary.
And that, we have correspondence in there for us on the breakthrough for Duncan.
Yes. I can, here. Right now, they are writing twenty-five dollars a day. As a day, and that you could see their letter, they wish to use it more on a permanent basis. When we do this, we normally have a contract with a set fee. I was trying to find out, figure out how much to give them. Equivalent, the church that uses is the big room, they do two hundred a month.
And they use it every Sunday.
And they use it every Sunday.
And this is only going to be used one Sunday a month?
Uh, no, every Sunday, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Every Sunday?
Yes, every Sunday, it'll be about, from four-thirty in the evening till eight o'clock.
Question, I know with the parking rec board, when they lease out the fields or have the fields used by organizations, you know, self-ah, or whatever, they're required to have some type of liability insurance or some type of insurance that covers, do we require the same thing?
That has always been on a per face as individual, uh, decision on the board.
And, and nothing against you, I was once a youth pastor myself, but I know you.
The church has required that. The church, over here, we did require that when they came in. When we had the photographer and all them, and yes, we required it. That was an individual decision on each circumstances.
I just want to make sure that the township's not liable for any injuries or whatever have you, you know, just like if somebody would be injured on a baseball field, that it's responsible, that association to have that coverage, to make sure that there's nothing liable in the township.
Helen, I don't have any problem with them using it down here and for a fee to be established. Contact our insurance program and see what we have here for coverage, or anybody that's in this building here tonight, or for that case in particular.
Well, if someone here came, yeah, we're, we're all.
We need to check on that down there, see, we may have that coverage there and see what they say about it.
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Put that on the agenda, bring it brought up next month.
I will.
Okay, or it can be brought up on the ninth, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
They haven't decided anything, yeah.
I'm just saying, we're giving a thought there.
What's your wish? I mean, other than this? Table it until then?
Yeah, that's what I said, I'd like to make a motion until you have time to check that out, to see what we got. We may have something that takes care of that, I can't imagine that we don't have, that we, around people come in here, period, and we don't have coverage with our umbrella. Our umbrella policy should cover all that. Now, let's, let's check it out and bring it back to the fore.
Okay.
And then, then you'll decide whether you want to make this individual have insurance for coverage for them.
Okay.
Let us see what we have for us.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
And then, second?
I second.
Second, all those in favor give their consent for saying aye. Ayes have it, so.
So temporarily until at least the ninth, they'll be, by day still.
Okay.
Okay.
Very kind, future land use, so.
Yes, they are asking you gentlemen to look at the zoning of what they put in for the county to see if it conforms, it's the same as ours, basically.
I move it be reported in the thank you.
Okay, no second, that's it, all those in favor give their consent for saying aye.
Ayes have it.
The next thing is from the conservation district for dirt gravel, low-volume roads programs, just for your information.
Here's your question to come back, that I, we went to that.
Yeah, I'm longer said it, they probably would.
The first line, program will not be using funds strictly for paving a road, so they're not, they haven't, they haven't utilized that part of the transportation money yet that we could do that. And I thought they would have it in place by now, so, hopefully, but next year we'll be out of the dirt road business. Dirt and gravel, old business.
Task check. That property. I haven't received anything, I haven't heard from her, and she has not picked up her certified from the last meeting. Sent her the letter telling her what she needed to do, that she had another thirty days, and and I even specifically told her the meeting was tonight.
We had no correspondence.
I have not, no correspondence, no phone.
Okay. I think we've carried this thing long enough, we've given ample time on it. I think it's time to stop the outflow of money on this township on behalf of dealing with any longer than what we have to do. Make it a form of motion, we put the lien for what we have against it and move on.
Okay.
I second.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent for saying aye. Ayes have it, so.
That's through Rich?
Yes.
Okay. And that's all the old business I have.
New business?
Resignation, Mr. McGee has resigned from doing the grounds as of today. He says he's going to go fishing.
I think we, uh, Board of Supervisors accept Devon's resignation on the condition that we recognize him somehow, to a dinner, to a class or something here. He's been pretty faithful out here, although he's talked to me about it, his wife said shoulders operations, having some physical problems, and he said just got to be two months. So, I accept Devon's resignation and take a look tonight, ask the other two supervisors to put forward and Karen, what we'd like to do in recognition for seventeen years of service.
Do we need a motion to accept the resignation?
It's resign, but we're going to do it. I made a motion to accept his resignation, ask him for a second.
So I second.
Second, all those in favor give their consent for saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
That's all the new business I have.
I have one thing I'd like to bring up for the board, for those that may be interested in it, and I watch it close, and it's really a big concern. Anybody following and watching what the EPA, or what our president wants to do with the EPA in regards to your water? Every little stream, right up to where it comes out of your ground, they're going to, will have control over. It's the biggest water and land grab taking place in this country that turned into federal bureaucracy and federal grounds. That's what the big thing was out west, the public ground, the government, one of those grounds for those out there, and that was part of this big land grab that's taking place across the country. Not paying attention, we automate. They will designate, if they come to your yard and they see that there's a mud puddle, or there's water laying in there, they can designate that wetland, and you can't even move it. They will have absolute control of all waters. Right now, US waters is only navigable water that they have control over. But that's in the making, I urge anybody that has anything to follow up on it and voice your opinion on it. The, the, it's going to affect, you're not going to be able to put a pond in your place, or you may have a pond that they say they want you to take out. They will absolutely control that water and all phases of it, and the contents of it, and what you as a landowner have to do to correct it if it doesn't meet their purity standard. It is scary for us. So I'd ask, urge everybody, take a look at that, and it's out there, it's been on the news some, it's in the Lancaster County Farmer Big Time, and the headline's in there, it's in the Farm Bureau, it's in all the agriculture, but because it is really going to affect them hard, they're going to control all water. Your local municipalities and your states are trying to take that away from them, I know our state representatives are fighting it at the present time. But don't be surprised if we don't get an executive order that says it's going to happen. So those things do concern me, they affect this township, they affect this municipality, and they will affect us big time.
If I may, like to make a recommendation that we put a link on our website to our two US senators, our state representative Lou Barletto, Mr. Keller, our representative, and then, uh, what's his name? Corman. And I believe it's Tiplit, is he coming, is he going to be representing part of Perry County starting in January with the new redistricting?
Maybe, I don't know, I'll have to check.
Okay, anyway, I would recommend to.
We already have Corman and Keller on it, but I'll get the other two.
Thank you.
Yeah, be, I'd ask everybody to, to your favor, be part of the organization out there saying ditch your role, and that's your motto. And so, I thought I'd bring that to your attention for what it's worth.
And he does have a pen and a phone.
Okay, that being all of the business, but town, yes, Greg?
I just want to offer, we had talked back in the spring about evacuation sites. I forgot what the storm was earlier this year that ended up not being, but you had called me about the availability of our facility, so I had taken from that too, that we were kind of the backup site for the township building.
I did, Mr. Solis done that on his own.
You would, you would call me though, I mean.
What's that?
You would call.
He called me, yeah, but it was his decision to take all the cots and everything out there. I called afterwards, after the fact, after I knew that decision was made. That's when I made the phone call, and I wanted to know how it got to be the secondary EMS, if you recall. I did not oppose what Mr. Solis done, but it was after the fact I found out what he done.
Okay.
Now, yes, I did make the call, it was after the fact, because I came up here and the EMS coordinator from down in Duncan, what's going on, why isn't it here? And the cots and everything got taken out of there. You asked Helen, I questioned that very thoroughly, and that's why I made the phone call, great.
And that was to verify the facilities were available, as we indicated they were. Moving forward, we're working with the cart team, the county annual response team, for some space out there that they can coordinate their operations. Also, the coordinator for the county's offline communications team, like the ham radios and such, is going to be working out of our station. The piece we are missing is the generator, and we're trying to work on that through Weefill Township specifically, and if it's a shared site for multiple municipalities to be an evacuation point, you know, that certainly makes sense to share that expense. And also, I just want to offer that if facilities are available, whatever's in the best interest of the township and the township residents, if it is to go to the fire company station too, I don't know what their shower and like banquet hall type facilities are, or what kind of kitchen or food availability they have, we always have food on hand, have a kitchen, we do, we have fundraisers through week, so some of those amenities, I'm not sure what you have at the firehouse, but certainly we'd be able to offer those.
Question for you, with your facility, do you ever have office space that would be able to be set up for emergency response team, communications, radios, whatever have you?
We, we have a, the banquet hall, which is a three-hundred person essentially.
Correct.
In a seated position, but we also have our training center, which is currently being actually used by Weefill Township's.
But if you needed a command center, you have office space to do that.
That's correct.
Would you have to displace your vehicles, depending on the size of the evacuation, would you have to displace your vehicles outside to expand? Or do you have enough room at this point in your, in your hall to house?
Without, without displacing vehicles based on the American route process formula, we have space for about seventy-five people.
About seventy-five people.
And then, again, if we had to expand and move vehicles outside, the base space would be available as well. If the weather's clear, you know, tents can be set up, shelters can be set up outside, but whatever, like I said, whatever's in the best interest of the township will probably work with, but I just want to offer that that is certainly still available. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. For the business, I make a motion.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give your consent for saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.